I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. This is Tuesday, May 11th. It's at 6:00 PM. We have present with us tonight, I'm Mary Ashcroft, Select Board Chair. We have Selectman Don Chaffee, Selectman John Paul Fagman, Selectwoman Sharon Russell, and Selectman Joe DiNardo. We also have a host of department heads and some members of the public, so welcome all. We're going to start with approval of the orders. They have been prepared. I have gone through them and signed them. I asked members of the Select Board to stop by the town office and sign them as you are able, so we can get the bills paid. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes for April 27th. They were in your packet. Is there any motion on the minutes?
Move to approve.
JP's moved and Sharon seconded that we approve the minutes of the April 27th meeting. Any discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you've approved the minutes.
I'll abstain, Mary.
Okay, Joe's abstaining. He was not at the meeting. All right, do we have from the floor, any public comment from anyone who was present but not on the agenda for tonight's meeting? Ed, was that you waving your fingers, raising your hand?
Yeah, I was doing both, I think.
All right, Ed Boe, Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Hi, everyone. I'm here wearing two hats tonight, one as the Director of the RRPC to say hi, and the other as a new member of the Prudential Committee of Fire District Number Six, which is Sunset Drive and Victoria Drive, so. On the RRPC side, I just want to let everyone know, and Bill too, that, you know, we've been giving some funding from the legislature to help towns work through some of the ARPA questions they might have. Eric Hall in our office is our lead planner handling those questions, so if you have questions about the money, what you can use it for, the guidance, treasury stuff, we're working with BLCT to help towns do that. So I just want that out there on one side. And then on the other side, from the Fire District, I'm just curious if there has been any consideration because water supply is one of the uses of ARPA that doesn't really need to be COVID-related, that and wastewater and broadband. Hoping that maybe if there is some water supply funding that's going to be going around, that maybe some of the fire districts could utilize some of that. I know in our case in Fire District Number Six, we have a precarious well situation, and the ultimate goal is to find another source. I know we're not alone in that, and I know there was a Digger article this week that talked about that in other districts, which I wasn't aware of as well, so. Just putting that in the minds, if there is some of that water supply, non-COVID tied funding that the Select Board is looking to find a home for, it can, I know it can be transferred to fire districts, and we have some planning projects that we would like assistance with, that we are going to be searching like through DEC and other places to find funding for those, so. That's kind of a plug with assistance on the other end, and thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. I think Bill sent around to the Select Board members information about an ARPA call-in question and answer. No, it's actually a tutorial session coming up, so I've signed up, I think I've signed up to do that, and I would encourage other Select Board members to do so. If you're interested, that gives us, you know, kind of do's and don'ts about what we're going to be able to do with the money and some ideas, so.
And that's on the 18th, Mary, I think, is the one you're talking about. It's, BLCT is hosting it. I'm not the presenter at that meeting, so.
Okay, good.
And you can use us in the meantime as well.
Are you going to plug the Fire District idea at the meeting?
Just tonight.
But that's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. Let me ask, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard, who is not otherwise on the agenda? Barbara, were you raising your hand for another matter?
Actually, I was just waving goodbye to Ed or hi.
Okay.
Hi Barbara, nice to see you.
All right. So let's move along then to our agenda. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Bill.
So, not too much to go over tonight. We have the current meeting schedule, committee agenda items, which have continuously been sent out, and seems to be working pretty well. So if anything needs to be added to that for any committees, please let me know. Number two is for this evening, just for informational purposes only, that's going to be brought up for discussion for the next meeting. I want to give everybody a chance to see that ahead of time. Number three is from Barbara, information on conservation commissions, and she'll go over that on her time. Number four is a letter we received from the Chamber and Economic Development Group of the Rutland Region, similar to the one we received from Portland Glass. This is, they had an issue, a maintenance issue in their building and are asking for a waiver on the requirement to increase their sewer discharge allocation.
So with, with the permission of the board, let's send that last item to the Water Sewer Committee, which is where I think we sent the other one.
It is, yes.
Okay. Is that okay with the board? Okay, I'll take that silence as a yes.
And number five is from, follow-up from last meeting, it's the 2021 Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement. We did get that sent to Byron, so he had a chance to review it, but that is the Public Works Agreement if the board, so chooses to adopt and sign tonight.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple other things. In your, in the board emails, you got copies, draft copies of letters for approval tonight that were discussed at the last meeting for Chief Chris Clark and for Emergency Management Director Marty Wasserman. Their insurance coverage letters, so those draft letters are in your emails from this afternoon. And lastly, I was, Byron and his crew did a great job getting a lot of the heavy brush cleared out of the cemetery next door. I was talking with Tom Giffen from the Vermont Old Cemetery Association. He stopped by afterwards and said, "It looks great," and now we can do some more work to clear up some of the other brush and repair and clean some of the stones there. He said, "We need some, some strong-bodied individuals." And yesterday, I actually reached out to Claudia Stute, who is a Boy Scout troop leader, about that, and he said that is exactly the kind of project his, his troop could help with, so. I'm going to get them coordinated so we can get, get that underway, but that was a very fortuitous little meeting, so. That's all coming up, and we'll probably be doing that in July or August. And that is everything I have on my desk.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. These are the same Boy Scouts, by the way, that did all of the work up around Northwood, so they're a great bunch to work with. Okay, we'll hold on the, and Byron will address, we'll ask him to the mutual aid agreement when he's up for his time. Let's go to Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hi there. Not much to report tonight. Yesterday was our deadline for the third installment of our taxes for the fiscal year. Just a reminder to anyone that still needs that reminder that if you haven't paid, you might want to get that in as soon as possible. However, good news, we have received 95% of our third installment, still receiving some later payments, so I expect to see that number increase over the week. And that's about it for tonight. Next Select Board meeting, I'll have an update to our budget status report, and we'll look at that a little closer as we get closer to the end of our fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie of any Select Board members? Okay, and I should have asked this too of Select Board members. Did any one of you have any questions of Bill? Okay. Barbara Noyes Pulling for the Town Planning Commission.
Yes, good evening. And I'll wear the, the double hats again with some reporting through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission as well. Yesterday, we had our first stakeholders meeting for the Pocket Park Grant, and this was the recreation group. We had a couple representatives from Green Mountain Power, a couple from Audubon of Rutland County, Trout Unlimited, Claudia Stute, a Boy Scout leader, who was mentioned earlier by Bill, Vermont Fish and Wildlife was there. Byron and, and Bill attended the meeting. Some interesting things came up. One of them, and want to run this by you. We don't have a survey done yet, but it looks like we want to do some things that are in the Business Route Four state right-of-way. So I was thinking I'd start discussions with the state on that. What, what we're talking about is probably some signs and maybe some trails and maybe a boat launch site that would fall in that right-of-way. So if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and just start those discussions with the state on what, you know, what, what they're looking for, what they need from us.
Barbara, would you add to that the possible relocation of the Need Falls sign, the historic sign?
Okay.
I'm not sure we want to, but let's just find out what it would take.
Yeah, yeah, and one thing we didn't have on our list until it was mentioned yesterday is a new sign for the Pocket Park, which would probably go in that, that same general vicinity. Another thing that came up yesterday was if we do, you know, if we have a boat launch and we're sending people seven miles downstream on the Otter Creek, you know, where do they, they come out? And, and right now, there is not either a natural or a man-made site where they can take out their boats in Proctor. They want to go that full distance. And in fact, it was brought up that the Proctor Select Board voted against putting in a formal put-out there, which, you know, is, is fairly close to the falls at Marble Bridge. So it could be a liability issue that they, that was bothering them. But, you know, if we want to proceed with, you know, promoting paddle, you know, paddle sports here at the Pocket Park, perhaps a discussion with the Select Board from Proctor might be in order sometime soon. The representative from Fish and Wildlife that was at the meeting is, is willing to be part of that discussion too with the Select Boards, and this is the person doing the Otter Creek Trail or planning that trail from Mount Tabor to Lake Champlain. And, you know, a number of other things were brought up yesterday. Byron came up with a couple more parking spots. So right now, we've got eight that we could conceivably have on the site. And, you know, the, the group talked about, you know, thinning out the woods along Simon's Avenue, so there's more visibility there. But there was a suggestion that, you know, we target invasives and get those out of the way, and maybe do some planting of native plants just to attract more wildlife there. So, so that group, you know, came up with its own list of suggestions. We're going to redo the map and go over the suggestions, and then I've got an upcoming meeting that will be scheduled with the local historians to work on that angle for the park. So that's the Pocket Park.
That sounds good. Any questions about that from Select Board members?
I don't have a question, Mary, but I have a suggestion for the boat launch and recovery or exit area. We can govern what's in the town, so we should be looking, or maybe a thought would be to look at where the Otter Creek exits Rutland Town and goes into Proctor, and somewhere at that point, see if there is a viable place to make a point where folks can go down the creek and then get out, and that's something we, we could control both ends of.
Okay.
I'll add that to the list.
All right. Thanks, Joe. And what's part two, Barbara?
Part two would be the, you asked for a one-pager on conservation commissions. The, the, the town, back of the Town Planning Commission, were interested in talking to you more about setting one up for the town, so I prepared that one-pager for you that describes the enabling legislation. It does appear that, in, in reading that more carefully, that the town would have to have a town-wide vote on conservation commission. The only other option is if you, if the town had a charter, then the Select Board could make that decision, but that wouldn't be the case with us. And, you know, there's, there's information there about what these commissions can do, and there's a whole variety of, of, you know, tasks that these commissions can be given, and, you know, they run the gamut from cleaning up, you know, a new Pocket Park, to actually finding land, or, you know, raising money to buy land for conservation. So, yeah, you asked for that, and, and there it is. We're wondering if you'd like to have a presentation as well.
Okay. So let's, well, first of all, let me ask Select Board members, what's your pleasure with this? Do we want to have a discussion and about conservation commissions and some idea what other towns might be doing with them? I'm not hearing anything. Well, let's do this. Bill, could you put this on the agenda for about a month from now? So not at our next Select Board meeting, but at the following one?
Yep.
Okay. And we can chat a little bit about it then. Thank you, and thank you, Barbara, and. Pardon?
I'm sorry, do you want any more information at that meeting?
Well, I think if we're going to have a discussion then, we probably want to hear why the Planning Commission is thinking it would be good for the town to do one, and what in particular they have in mind, and maybe what other municipalities have done.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any questions of Barbara?
The only other thing I was going to add was that we'll take up Velco's 45-day notice at our next meeting Thursday night. I don't anticipate many comments, we've, because they came in and got a subdivision permit, we've, we've actually visited with them three times over the last few months, so we know the project pretty well, so I'm not sure we'll be, we have much to add there.
Okay. This is the project up at Post Road and Roots, Route 7 intersection somewhere up there?
Yeah, yeah, they're just, they're enlarging the footprint of their existing substation there.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you, Barbara. Now, this is going to be interesting how we do this, but Mike Rowe is here live and in person, and so I'm going to call on him and see how he reports.
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me or not?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I just have a couple things. One, things are going really well park-wise, we're getting a lot of stuff done. The weather's kind of helped out, cooperated. My only question I have for JP is, as soon as we know some guidance as far as swim lessons, JP, so as soon as you might know if we're able to conduct them, I know it's still probably early, but if you hear anything, that would be great. Essentially, we're going to at least start the season the way we, we did last year. Obviously, following all the guidance from the governor as far as how we can have people, but the question would be about swim lessons if we're able to conduct them. So when you get a chance, JP, if there's anything out there about that, that would be great. It doesn't have to happen quickly because it's only the middle of May, but if we could find that out, that would be a huge help moving forward. And then the other, I don't really have anything else. Other than that, baseball's going very well. We have games tonight, and things are kind of running smoothly, as smooth as can, can be. So that's all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions for me, let me know.
Any questions for Mike Rowe? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, next up, Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening. Just a few announcements. One, I've started work on the Act 250 permit for the shared use path. That is almost completed. I'm up to criteria 10, and we'll get that hopefully done in the next couple weeks. The packet from Robert Clark for the stormwater application is almost complete, and I anticipate getting that from him within the next week. So that's, that's progressing along, and hopefully we'll have all permits in place in time to get that built this late summer. I met with Masterson Excavating, Robert Clark, and Tim Rice from Wilt Paving today on Ranberry Road in regards to the drainage there. There is still some puddling of water in the area of Still Energy that didn't exist before. Everybody's hemming and hawing because it's so flat down there, it's difficult to make water go anywhere. So we came up with a couple solutions. One, we would retain $2,500 in the retainage and use that to, at our own discretion, to do something there. Or we'll, we'll decide whether they're going to actually try to fill that an inch or two and try to get that water to drain to the west like it should, so. Tim was going to go back, talk to Steve, and hopefully within the next day or so, we'll have an answer on that. You signed the contract with Mend and Trucking last Select Board meeting. I have not gotten that to Seth for his signature. I noticed that there's only three Select Board members' signatures on it. If that's okay with you, I will forward that on to, to Seth. If not, you know, maybe we can get the other two Select Board members to stop by and get that signed.
You only need three.
Yeah.
Okay, then I will get that forwarded to them. I also signed up today for the BLCT webinar in regards to the ARPA funds. That's on May 18th from 1:00 to 2:30. I think we need as many people in town in leadership positions to, to know how that money can or can't be spent. And I don't know how that money is yet going to be distributed, whether it's going to be on a project basis, or if they're just going to write checks to communities and with a list of guidelines, and here you go, like they did with the revenue sharing money years ago. So hopefully we'll get some more information next, I think that's next Monday. And then the, the last thing I had, I did make up a, a rough map of the Post Road area and what was being proposed for the Post Road sidewalk, and where the school has purchased additional land, and what would be needed there to complete a connection from that to Chisana Drive. The question being, do you want me to proceed and try to get the grant for the, to construct a sidewalk along Post Road for Chisana Drive, or do you want to abandon that and try to work with the school people and get a connection across the private property with an easement to connect to school property?
That was a nice map. Thank you. That kind of explains. Has anyone approached the landowner that would make the connection between the school parcel and over to Chisana?
As far as I know, the only attempt was made by Matt Branchad to Matt Thirio, and I don't think that has gone anywhere, but I'm not sure. I didn't want to, you know, step on people's toes. I didn't want to get involved with something that maybe we shouldn't be involved with. I don't know. Well, that, that was my question, you know, do we table this grant application and wait another year, or do we proceed with that and try to, try to get the grant?
When's the deadline for this grant?
June 4th, and I do believe it requires one public hearing before that.
Okay, I'm, you know, what's the Select Board's pleasure on this? The school did get the, and the voters approved the purchase for the property that went to the school. There is a gap between the school property and Chisana, and in order for them to connect, they would have to get a right-of-way from a landowner who apparently hasn't yet been approached, at least not recently. And we have been planning, you know, all along to proceed with Post Road up to Chisana, then up Chisana to our new easement area and up to the shared use path.
Is Mike Rowe still there?
He just came back in, yes.
Is part of the evacuation plan for the school still exist along Post Road to Chisana Drive to the truck spawn?
Yes, it does. That's the second option. So I can go in and I can talk now that we own that property, and to be honest, that map was great, Byron. I never even thought of that straight-line shot, to be honest with you. Essentially what it is from that back corner. So I can go in and talk to the school and, and ask them that question and talk about that approach as far as our evacuation route to Chisana. And that could help things along, but I don't think, I'd never really even thought of that connection until you drew that map, so I thank you for kind of making me rethink of where it was going. So I can do that if the board doesn't mind. I can at least bring that up to the school, and the school can then take that on their own if, if you would like me to do that.
I think that's a great idea. As far as I'm concerned, I've always been an advocate for that, for that sidewalk along Post Road, but if its use or the, or the pedestrian traffic along that section of Post Road has diminished because of different avenues for people to take, then, you know, the question came to my mind whether we still really needed to make that connection or not.
I think it was Don who mentioned at the last meeting that there are a number of neighborhoods up there that, you know, there are walkers on Post Road, so it isn't like that walking community would go away.
That's correct. Yeah.
What, Mary, one of the concerns I've always had about the sidewalk, though, is that we provide a sidewalk from the school to Chisana, but if but it's my understanding the kids would be walking on Chisana down to the corner to go up to the park. And I'm not sure that that's a safe scenario to have those kids walking in the road. And I, I kind of like the idea that we own that land behind the school now, or the school does. And I'm wondering if there's grant money out there that would help us put in a trail system there, wide enough and safe enough, and then, you know, it would obviously hinge on the landowner letting us go across, but keeping the kids away from the traffic to me would make more sense. And and I don't know if the school plans on doing anything with that, but we don't need two paths. We only really need one, so we, we really should figure out which way we want to go and kind of put all the eggs in one basket and go that way.
Joe, I can speak from the school side. We've already, there's already a trail that is established that Matt Branchad and other people spent extensive time last summer that actually hook right up that goes right up to Grover Drive. So the trail already exists, it's been worked on, it's been cleared, and it exists already. The only part on Byron's map, if you were to look at it, is instead of following the, the trail that's created, we would take basically a, a hard right and go straight across. Byron, am I correct on that? And come right out at Chisana?
That's correct.
Essentially.
Yeah.
Which I never, owning that property, I never, it never dawned on me to even think of that as a, a direct way to Chisana. So Joe, the path does already exist, it is already used by kids from Grover Drive and countryside, they already use it to come back and forth to school, I can tell you that, I see them using it all the time.
Okay, so, so basically some of it's already done. I'm just thinking that, you know, the, the cost of the sidewalk, it, it benefits walkers, but it's only a short sidewalk, and, and that's always been my concern because it's like a road to nowhere. You know, I don't think we were planning on running a sidewalk all the way down Chisana to the corner where we go off into the Northwood Trail. So there's just something to think about, that's been a concern that I've had. And, you know, maybe we could put our town money into, with the school money and just make that a really nice trail out through the woods and, and make sure it's wide. And like I say, I know there's been some concern about it's you know, it's kind of isolated out there and, and that's always been a safety issue for kids to be walking where on the sidewalk, you're more visible, but you're also more likely to have a close encounter with a vehicle. And you know, the way people drive nowadays, they're not sure if they want to be in the road or the sidewalk or the ditch or wherever. So just something I think we should really consider before we, we put our money anywhere.
So the pending question is whether, and there's no motion on it, it's just Byron wants to know whether he should put in the application for the Post Road-Chisana link to the shared use path to see if we can get a grant. And that deadline is June 4th.
Mary, is that just a, is that a construction grant or just a, like a study grant? What does the grant actually do for us?
No, that's a construction grant. Same type of grant that we used down there at the Co River Road to build the U-House sidewalk. It's 50 cents of money, it's not huge, but anytime you can leverage a dollar of your own money and get another dollar from someone else, it's certainly a plus.
You know, the sidewalk would have merit if there's enough other pedestrian traffic on Post Road besides the school. It would be just like there was the, the run down to Route 7 from the school. There's a lot of, you know, there's a fair amount of pedestrian traffic, so we probably should apply for the grant and build that other, what is it Byron, about 500 feet?
It's about 900.
900? Okay, it's a little longer than I thought, but.
Probably would be, probably would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And, and that's why I brought the question up because I wondered if it would be better if we had that type of resource if we used that instead to construct that link that, that's under the helping study right now.
Mary?
Yeah, Don.
Just a couple of questions. As I understand it, we have the trail, as Mike said, we have the trail that was built. And that straight line across that gets us to Chisana is contingent upon a landowner granting us some permission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, it seems that we need to answer that question like real quick. Because obviously if that particular person is in control, especially if we're going to consider that, that trail and then that interconnecting link that gets to Chisana will also be the evacuation route for the school. Because without that link, there is no evacuation route, and we should proceed with the sidewalk. And I mean, we, we may want to proceed with the sidewalk anyway, but we certainly would have to if we don't get the link down there. We can't just evacuate and let the kids wander around Northwood Park.
No, but that's what they're doing now. I mean, when they do practice, they walk up Post Road, you know, with several teachers and, and I think John Sly used to escort them, and they would walk up Post Road up to Chisana Drive, down to Tredons Pond, where the gathering area is.
Right, but they could use the, they could use that other, they could use that trail path in the back if they had to link.
I, I believe that's probably what they would do, yes.
Well, I, I think it all, the, the whole thing hinges on whether we can get that link, really, as far, as far as I can see.
I think, I think you're right, Don, but in the meantime, I mean, do we have Byron apply for the grant? And if we should get the easement in the meantime before we find out, we could always decline the grant. Now, that puts a lot of work on Byron to decline, but.
I think we ought to have an ace in the hole. I mean, I, I really think we've got to cover ourselves both ways because if you don't get that length, then we're going to need the sidewalk. I don't want them walking next to the road. It certainly wouldn't hurt to apply for it, I don't think. I would vote to go ahead and apply myself.
All right. So I'll make that a motion. Any second to it.
Check it.
Sharon seconds. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of having Byron apply for the grant for Post Road-Chisana sidewalk, please say aye.
Aye.
All vote yes? I think everybody else voted yes. Okay, so yes please Byron, do apply.
Okay, well said.
Okay.
So Mary, the second part of the question. Who, who, who is it up to to go talk to the landowner, us or the school?
Joe, that would be the school. The school owns the, in my belief, the school owns the property. It's the schools, it's not your job to talk to the landowner for a school pri, I mean, you could, but I would let the school go first and ask them, explain that we'd like to do it for a dual purpose, you know, the path and our evacuation route for our kids. So I will get right on that tomorrow, go in and talk to the principals and have them at least start that process and then go from there.
Okay, thanks Mike.
Does that sound okay? I mean, are you guys okay if I do that?
It's a plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Good, thank you. Let's see, we do have a visitor who.
Mike, if I were you, I would talk to the school board.
Right, yeah.
Yes. I will, I, I will go to the principal and ask them to talk to the school board. I, I have no authority whatsoever, but I can ask them to start the process. You are, you are absolutely correct JP.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to take a little break in our schedule. I note that Mr. Anil Sashdev from the Holiday Inn is participating this evening. He said that he would stay in touch with us to give us continued updates about the situation at the Holiday Inn and the sheltering of the homeless folks down there. So Mr. Sashdev, if you would like to give us an update, we'd appreciate it. And I think you have to unmute yourself. Okay. Good evening.
I'm here back to give you an update on what is the progress at the Holiday Inn with this ECS voucher. In, you know, starting today, we had hired a, a security guard who works in the daytime. And we got a call from the state, Mr. Mark Eli. They, they are also hiring one more person, starting from Monday. So in, you know, now going forward, we'll be having two security guards from the state and one from the hotel. So it will be kind of a round the clock, uh, security guard at the hotel. And also we have started putting the fans, and the fans will be ready by Friday, which is going to eliminate people going from the hotel towards the Green Plaza, you know, mall. And other than that, you know, we are adding some cameras. We are making more walks from the property. And lastly, to let you know that, you know, we have evicted more than 15 people last week who were not obeying the, the hotel policy and the state policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will also note that Mr. Sashdev sent around the logbook for the smoke alarm. Apparently that is that is a weekly check. Actually, if you could look at that for a minute, Mr. Sashdev, and just explain what the yellow bars mean and what the check marks mean.
The check box means, you know, they were, they, they went into the room and they checked everything and everything was fine.
Okay, and what's the yellow for?
It's the same thing, you know, sometimes they do with the yellow bar, yellow pen, and sometimes they do with the check mark with the regular pen, you know.
Okay. And are there other rooms that are occupied besides the ones that are checked?
Yes, they do the random checking, you know, like random 30, 40 rooms every, every week.
Okay, so you don't check every room, you just do a random check?
Yes, about 40 rooms random check.
Okay. And there's a notation on room 113 that I can't make out. Was that a check?
Yeah, that was a check. Yes.
There's, there's a notation there.
I don't have that paperwork in front of me. Can you give me a moment to open that mail?
Sure. Actually, it's, if I'm scrolling through all three weeks, it looks like the same notation for room 113 all the way through.
Give me a minute, I, I, you know, I'll open the bit.
Okay. Sorry about that, folks. Not sure how long this is going to take. Byron, while we're waiting, if I can call you back, the mutual aid agreement from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, did you have a chance to review that?
I did review that quickly. It's very similar to the same one that we had beforehand. It just dispels out procedures. And you do need to have a designated, oh, I have a name for it, in other words, the designated contact person. That, that would be one person that would be, that would be responsible for requesting aid. Any communications, that sort of thing with the, with any aid community. But I'll go through that one person.
Okay. And who's, is it you or Bill for that? Have you discussed that with him? Who's the logical person to request mutual aid?
I was in the, in the previous agreement, I was the one that was the, the contact person.
Okay.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't matter at this point. It might be well to have Bill do it. Simply because of, you know, what's coming along in the next couple of years.
And this is just a year to year agreement, isn't it?
I didn't know if there was a, if there was a an ending date to that particular contract or not.
Marty is on the call, I'm not sure if he's got information on that or not, but I thought, I didn't know it expired, but
Okay.
we got, we got it sent back to us by Stephanie and Stephanie Bork, and she asked us to redo it, so.
Okay.
It is something you review from time to time, and it should be kept up to date. It is an important document to have on hand in case it's used, particularly in a FEMA situation.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the board if there's any motion from the board.
I move that we sign that agreement with, I guess, I think the consensus that Bill would be the designated person or the contact person.
Okay. Motion's made to approve with Bill as our representative. Is there a second?
Check it.
Information?
Sharon seconds is the discussion.
May I ask a question?
Marty?
Do you want to put Bill's name or his position? My suggestion would be the position. And/or his designee. So if Bill is not the town administrator, it would be the town administrator and his, his or designee.
That would be fine with me.
Sharon, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, not to raise any undue alarms, Bill.
Marty, I doesn't, I doesn't get you Marty.
Okay, motions, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of the vote, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. So Mr. Sashdev, sorry about that, we just took the time to do a little bit of business there.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that. It, it is a, you know, a code for a, you know, we do have an ECS and we do carry the people from, you know, the drug rehab, rehabilitation, you know, and that is a room for drug rehabilitation. That is why they put a different code on that.
So 113 is that room?
Yeah, that is a room with the drug habit, you know, the, the person who is on rehab on the drug.
Oh, okay. So somebody lives there. Is there any reason why you're not checking it?
No, it's checking it, but you know, they put it in a different code which is, which is not an ECS code, it is a, a drug rehab code.
Okay. Okay, so any questions from the Select Board about Mr. Sashdev's update for us?
Just one, Mary. Do, do you have any idea, Mr. Sashdev, where those residents that you evicted, where they went or what the disposition was?
They don't let us know about that, you know, we have to fill up an application to move them out from the property. And they tried to find the room somewhere in the town, and if they're not able to find, they go out of town. But I make sure that they were not at the Quality Inn, and they, they were not at the Econ Lodge, they went out of the town.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from Select Board members? Joe?
All set, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Sashdev. We do appreciate your update and, and your staying in touch. And hope you continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your support. Really appreciate it. Have a nice.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So Fire Chief Chris Clark.
Good evening, Mary.
Hi, Chris.
I really have nothing, really have nothing to report tonight. It's been a slow couple of weeks, only two fire calls in the last two weeks. I did want to try to set up a fire committee meeting with you and JP if possible.
Yes, please.
So whatever day works for you guys.
So I think for this week, the only day because of the notice we would have to give, well, yeah, it would be Friday afternoon after 3:00. JP?
Yeah, I wouldn't be available then. I'd have to kick it over to the following week.
Okay, so let's do some emails back and forth and see what next week is like. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of the town fire chief? Oh, thank you for getting. Oh, thank you for getting in. I think you've got a number of items in for the safety grant. We're going to try and get some state funding for boots, it looks like.
Yes, we are trying for that.
Good. Okay, thank you, and thanks to Bill for bulldogging that one. Appreciate it. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
How you doing, Mary?
I'm good.
So last two weeks, we had twenty-nine calls for service, five directly related to the Holiday Inn, seven more more indirectly related to the areas directly around the Holiday Inn. They did have another
You guys hearing okay?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
And we did have another overdose over the weekend at the Holiday Inn. We did have a meeting last Friday with the city, the chief police of Rutland City, some commanders and some people from the state. They talked about what was going on. The state's trying to provide some services there for COVID stuff and also for drug rehab, and they have access to different materials. Hopefully, they'll be setting up there. They everybody says we wanted them yesterday, but hopefully within the next couple of weeks, they'll have some services for both the Quality Inn and the Holiday Inn. Other than that, I don't have a lot, I don't think.
So the police committee did meet?
Yes.
And the minutes are in the packet. We don't have anything for action by the full select board, so do read through the minutes. However, why don't you do a quick report on the bill that we're going to send to the state?
Oh, so which one?
The one for calls.
Yeah, so we put together Lynn Galloppo, without her help, we couldn't have done it. She put together a whole list of all the calls and all the times we spent there, and we're going to afford that bill to the state of mind. I remember the exact figures. Do you have them, Mary?
Yeah, it's sixty-six calls, and we're estimating forty-five dollars per call. So the first bill, which covers February, March, and April, will be for twenty-nine hundred seventy dollars. And this is thanks to Senator Josh Terenzini for getting getting the approval to build the state for this. Okay. Any other questions of the chief of police? Sharon, you were at the police committee meeting. Anything that you would like to add?
Nope, nope.
Okay, questions for the chief?
Just a just a comment, Mary. Is 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 the chief in the room with you?
Yes, he is.
I just wanted to comment that the sound quality is very much better, and it's a lot easier to hear you, chief. On when when you're, I think, I don't know, was when you're at home, it's it's very muffled. It's difficult to hear you. Much better tonight. Thanks.
It's actually in the police office. I'm using Deputy Washburn's computer, and I have been known to mumble, so I try to
No, this is much better tonight. Thank you.
Good to know. Thanks, Don. Okay, back to the agenda. I've lost my agenda. Here we go. John Paul Fagin, Town Health Officer.
Nothing active to report, except I do need an executive session with the Board of Health at the conclusion of this select board meeting.
Okay.
It would be to discuss it would be to discuss a matter of the premature disclosure, which would put us at a disadvantage.
Okay, do you want anyone else in on that meeting? Other than the Board of Health?
Bill Sweet.
Okay, very good. Let's see, going through my pile, I did find a liquor license renewal application. This is for the Holiday Inn Rutland. And we will do our usual and ask the chief of police if he has concerns.
So I do have concerns based on the recent past performance of the Holiday Inn and how they handle problems and issues, and I don't think we need to add any more drugs, whether it be alcohol, into this situation at this point in time. I think it'd be detrimental to the towns and the general area down there.
Okay. So you're requesting that we deny?
I am.
All right, discussion from the select board.
Do we need a motion, Mary?
Um, I think given the cert- yeah, that would be wise.
I would move that with I can't even think of how long a word is, that we denied the motion based on information provided to us by our police department.
Check it.
Motion's made and seconded to deny the liquor license renewal for the Holiday Inn. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed to the motion? Motion carries. Okay, the liquor license is denied. Anything else for the let's see, committee meeting updates, I guess that's where we should go. There was a meeting of the Recreation Committee. And you were there, and it was about the path. It was very brief. There she is. Sharon, can you report on the Rec Committee meeting?
Well, I think we pretty much touched on it with the path. I don't think there's a lot more. We did we did feel that it was okay at this time for Mike to put up the basketball hoops. We had done some consulting with JP, and he sent us what the state and the CDC recommended, so I think Mike's going to go ahead with that, if I'm correct. Are you there, Mike?
I am.
Am I correct?
Yes, I had signs made. I'm in the process of taking care of that.
Right, there's going to be signs that direct how they or how they can participate in what they can do.
Okay. The committee did review, I'm looking at the minutes here, the two sets of plans by Otter Creek Engineering for the shared use path. One was had a lot of switchbacks and one only had one, I think.
That's right.
Yeah, and Sharon, the committees recommend to the full board?
Yeah, the recommendation is that we do the one with the less switchbacks. Even though, I don't know, from what we gathered, we felt that was, am I right, Joey?
Yeah, that was the that was the preferred route. That was the route that Byron was kind of thinking we should go with, and there's less involvement with possible obstructions to our path, so we preferred the shorter of the two routes, and I believe that decision is necessary so Byron could move forward with the permit process, if I understood that right.
You are right.
So I will treat Sharon's Sharon is making the motion and Joe as seconding that we go with the shorter path with one switchback. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, I think the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Okay.
Mary?
Yep, go ahead, Don.
Excuse me, I I was a little bit asleep at the switch. Byron, I see you're still on, and I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask you before you weren't on. First of all, do you have a time schedule for painting that line on the road up there at the post road?
Yeah, just soon as we get a little warmer weather. It helps with the paint, the pavement temperature is a little warmer.
Okay.
Yeah, other than that, I have all the materials and we're ready to go just as soon as we can get, you know. Looks like it's going to be in the seventies next week. That would be a good time to do that.
Okay, second question then, related to that. We've been carrying this table motion. I think it would probably be appropriate when we get to it to bring it off the table and dispense with it. Is that appropriate with you? Is that all right with you?
That's fine with me, but that's again, that's, you know, your your board decision whether to leave that sitting on the table or whether you just want to clear it.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I want to do. Just to, I think all parties are comfortable with that at this point. As long as the line is as long as the line is painted. Thank you, Bye.
Okay, thanks, Don. By the way, why don't you report on the Scholarship Committee? We have a recommendation to the board.
Uh, you have the list, Mary?
I do, and it was distributed to the board members by email.
So the Scholarship Committee met, Mary and I met. We had a nice meeting, and we had some good interaction, and there's some really, really qualified students in our town. As usual, we wish we had more money, but we did come to agreement on the distribution, and we make a recommendation to the board that they approve the list of scholarship awardees as presented to the board members.
Motion's made and seconded? And thirded? Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the recommended list of scholarship recipients, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Don. Any other committee meetings that we should note? All right. Done those. Update on project list. Looks like we have the twenty twenty-one goals and focuses are now Center Rutland Pocket Park. We heard about that tonight. The railroad lawsuit, I think we covered a few weeks ago. The War Memorial at Town Hall, now the circle is out, and we asked anyone interested to who wanted to work on that an ad hoc committee to let us know. I have not heard from anyone, Bill, or any other select board member. Have you heard of anyone who's volunteering to help?
Not yet.
Okay. Grover Drive Stormwater Area. So that's a quick Byron question. Is that now as it's it ought to be? All constructed?
Yes, that's all done and taken care of and functioning quite well.
Okay, very good, so we can check that one off. Route seven north sidewalk, we applied for the scoping study, I believe, at the last meeting or two meetings ago. Rooftop solar arrays, we have not discussed that for a while. The Center Rutland Fire Station lawsuit, we did get an update on that a few months ago from our town council. The replacement of the McKinley Fire Station, I suspect the Fire Committee might be touching on that when they meet next week, and the shared use path, we discussed quite a bit this evening. So there we are with that. I think, Bill, I I had requested that we also add succession planning is something we ought to start talking about. So if you could do that, that would be good. Thank you. All right, oh, Green Up Day was held, and a lot of people were out, and I think, did we set a record, Byron, for the the number of bags delivered?
I don't know if it's a record, but we had two truckloads. There were approximately around sixty bags that were picked up in addition to twenty-two tires and some tin and some other miscellaneous stuff. We took all that stuff directly to Hubbard's and dumped it off, so Hubbard's allowed us to have dump one load free of charge because it was Green Up Day, and the second load we will be billed for. That was somewhere in the neighborhood of, I don't know, seven or eight hundred pounds. So it won't be it won't be too costly, but I was very pleased with the with the response this year. It was much better than last year, and certainly is good, if not a little better than the year before.
Okay, thank you to everybody who got out and greened up. It was a great effort, and it's lovely to see those bright green trash bags and piles of miscellaneous stuff by the side of the road. Thank you, Byron and town crew, for picking up our bags. Okay, under new business, the board to vote on re signing the public works mutual aid agreement, and we did that. Is there any other new business that the board wishes to consider?
I have just one other topic, Mary, when you're ready.
Okay, why don't you do it now, Bill?
Okay, the the safety grant you were talking about before, we are we are very close to being being able to submit it. Chief Dumas asked me to add one item to it, which are to increase the storage capacity of the cameras at Town Hall to ask for larger hard drives that would allow us to record up to thirty days and retain that. So it would double our capacity that we have right now. So that would be, if we were awarded the grant, it'd be about three hundred fifty dollars to our to to match it, so it's seven hundred dollar application for a fifty percent match. So does anybody have any questions or is that okay to add?
It's fine with me.
Don, it's good to me.
Okay, the the camera system has come in very handy. There's some video we've been able to pull that has helped the police department in a couple of cases, so it's been it's been very valuable. The the other item, which I did ask VLCT, and they're not sure if we would get approved or not, but is an ID printer. We we did have an agreement, an arrangement with the Pittsburgh Police Department, but that person doesn't work there anymore. They had some technology problems. But we've never had a system of our own. In doing a little research, it's about about eighteen hundred dollars for the entire system that includes badges and everything, and they're not sure we would get approved for that. But they said we could put it in and try, so our matching will be fifty percent of that, so. But that could be used for all the departments, but we have we have new employees at the office who have never been able to get an ID because we don't have the ability to produce them anymore.
Yeah. And Don doesn't have an ID, and Sharon, I don't, did you get one or did you come in just after?
I don't think Sharon has one.
Okay.
Jason doesn't have one from the Highway Department. And there's several people in the Fire Department that don't have them, so it could be used for every department would obviously have access to it, so, but that would get us get us started.
Okay, anybody have any objection to pursuing the ID printer as well as the expanded camera storage capacity?
No. No, no objection, just I'll use my veteran's ID card in in place of that till we get it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Down under old business, the items are there. Don, I'm sort of reading into this. Let's get the bar painted on Post Road and then take a look at this table motion. Did I read you right on that?
Almost. I have every confidence in I have every confidence in Byron's ability to get that done as he said he would, so I don't have any problems just taking that thing off of just, I guess I'm sick of seeing it on there, and it it looks like we have decided we have decided something, so I think we ought to just make a motion and and dispense with it. You know, I'd make the motion that we bring this off the table and and vote on it.
To bring it off the table, although frankly, I've forgotten exactly what the motion was, so gonna need some help.
I think the motion was to approve the guardrail.
I think you're right.
And and so we so what do we have to do? Two two motions, Mary, one to take it off the table and then one to decide what we're going to do?
Yeah. So I think I heard Sharon second the motion to take it off the table. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, motion is to take this off the table and bring it up for business. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's off the table. Okay. So we believe the motion, the, the motion that was tabled was to approve the guardrail as well as the sign painting. So what's your pleasure? Don, do you want to speak to this?
Well, I don't, I think that we've had ample discussion on it. And I think, you know, unless anybody has anything further to add to the discussion, we would simply vote on the motion. And-
I do have a motion if you want to hear it.
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, so the, it came up, so Mr. DiNardo discussed the guardrails, which were approved at the last meeting for the intersection of Post Road, Post Road Extension. He supports not installing the guardrail based on comments from the report, which stated the guardrail was not appropriate for what the intended purpose is. Mr. DiNardo moved to reverse the decision of installing the guardrails and focus on the recommended signage. Mr. Jones seconded the motion. The motion passed. So the motion was to not install the guardrails.
Right.
Okay. So I guess-
Do I have to restate the motion, Mary? Or do we vote on what, what we, what that motion was and seconded?
We already have the motion on there.
Yeah, so we just got to vote.
So the, the motion was to not install the guardrails and that motion was tabled.
Okay. So all those in favor of not installing the guardrails, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We're not installing the guardrails. And that is now taken care of under old business.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Don. Okay. Is there any other business that any select board member wishes to bring up before we see if we want to go into executive session?
I'm all set.
I'm good.
Okay.
Good.
Right. John Paul, you have a motion then.
Yeah, I would move we go into executive session as order help to consider a matter of the premature disclosure, which would put us at a disadvantage.
I second a motion.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the motion of going into executive session, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're in executive session at 7:14. Okay, 7:28? Is there any motion?
I would move that the, the select board would approve or the Board of Health, whichever board we meet at, the hiring of Frank Chaffey as a special assistant to our health officer, John Paul Fagin.
I'll second him.
Yeah, at the rate of $35 per hour.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. That was Sharon that made that second, Mary.
Okay.
Well, you can go ahead and have it, Joey. Or Don, doesn't matter, just get it seconded.
Okay, are you, are you voting in favor of the main motion, Sharon?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, JP. All right, so we're out of the second session. Yes, Joe.
Question, the two letters that we received this evening or today by email, do we have to take action on those approving and getting those signed?
No, because they refer, this is the personal use of, of-
Vehicle.
Use of vehicles, yeah. We approved it at our April 27th meeting. So all you need to do is sign when you come in. It'll be in your packet to do so, okay?
Am I able to sign those since I wasn't there? Or I didn't know, how, how does that work?
Well, just go ahead and sign it.
Okay.
Why don't we just, why don't we just have a quick motion to affirm our decision? You can participate in that and then sign it.
Okay. So-
I move we affirm our decision.
Okay. Second?
I'll third it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded and thirded. And this is the, this is a Chris Clark and a Marty Wasserman use of vehicle letters. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.